I'm going to call the meeting Tuesday, October 17 to session.
So is there any?
Call roll.
Okay. Here?
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay. We do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Okay. With that, we're going to go into closed session until 5:30.
And I'll just read the titles really quickly. We have two closed session items today. First one is a public employment recruitment city manager pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957B1. A second item is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Section 54957.6 of the Government Code. Agency representatives are interim city manager Alex Posada and interim chief human resources officer Don Jackson. Employee organizations include all bargaining units, unrepresented employees, managers, and executives.
Okay. Thank you. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to note that Mayor Patino is unavailable this evening, and I will be filling in for her as mayor pro tem. We have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Ms. Villagrana. Ms. Villagrana, would you mind raising your hand? And you can ask her for listening device if you'd like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta de orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. La intérprete de esta tarde es la señora Villagrana, está atrás. Si necesita ayuda, por favor, búsquenla. So I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of October 17, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link at the top of the agenda. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor pro tem. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino is absent.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. With respect to items 3A and 3B, instructions were provided to the negotiators, and there's no further report to be made.
Thank you. Now, the first item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation, and I will be making the presentation, which will be accepted by Frank Ortiz. So whereas Rotary International and the Rotary Club of Santa Maria Valley in Apomo have been engaged in a 35-year campaign to eradicate polio worldwide, and whereas Rotary brings 118 years of history to this initiative, its members are business, professional, and community leaders who provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. Over 35,000 Rotary Clubs located in more than 200 countries and geographical areas build coalitions and initiate service projects to address today's challenges, including illiteracy, disease, hunger, poverty, lack of clean water, and environmental concerns. And whereas when Rotary began its mission to eradicate polio, more than 350,000 children in 125 countries were stricken with polio every year, and nearly 1,000 people were affected by the crippling disease every day. Since then, polio cases have been reduced by over 99% to only 30 cases in 2022. And whereas today, only two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan, remain polio endemic. Due to the efforts of Rotary and its partners, the world is on the threshold of ending polio forever, making it only the second disease after smallpox to be eradicated. And whereas public awareness, advocacy, and funding remain crucial to Rotary and its partners, the World Health Organization, and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF. I therefore, Mayor Pro Tem, stand in for the mayor, Alice Patino, for the city of Santa Maria, and hereby proclaim October 24, 2023, as World Polio Day in the city of Santa Maria. And I hereunto, she has set her hand and has caused the seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto the 17th day of October 2023. Now Frank Ortiz can accept this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. On behalf of the four local Rotary Clubs from Santa Maria and Apomo, I'd like to thank you for helping us recognize World Polio Day. The complete eradication of polio has been our number-one international priority since 1988, and this goal is finally within our grasp. But first, we Rotarians here this evening would also like to recognize another organization celebrating their 100th anniversary with a proclamation from you in just a bit, and that is Kiwanis International. And congratulations to the Kiwanis in the group here tonight. Smallpox was the first and only major viral disease to be eradicated on this planet. For decades, 30% of those infected died. Smallpox was finally declared eradicated by the World Health Organization in 1980. In 1988, Rotary International declared the complete eradication of polio its major international focus. We have worked hard to get there, but like smallpox, the polio effort is down to a heavy surveillance and vaccination campaign. To verify the world free of polio, there must be zero polio cases for three years. We are looking at early 2026 to finally meet this goal. City Council members, thanks again to each of you for this proclamation and recognition of our World Polio Day in just a couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Just want to say, I'm really proud of this organization, as being part of it for many years, and appreciate the work that we do and serve before itself. So thank you guys for everything that you do, and I appreciate all the support that you do for everybody in Santa Maria and all this area.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Frank, it's just always great to see you, sir, for all the first responding you did and everything. It's just, it's an honor to see you. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is another proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation and to be accepted by Margaret Lang, artist and member of Santa Maria Arts Council.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Santa Maria recognizes the invaluable contributions of the arts and humanities to our communities' cultural and economic vitality. And whereas the arts and humanities provide essential opportunities for creativity, self-expression, and personal growth, enriching the lives of our residents. And whereas Santa Maria is home to a vibrant and diverse arts and humanities community, including visual artists, musicians, writers, actors, historians, and cultural organizations who continuously inspire and educate us. And whereas the arts and humanities contribute significantly to our local economy by attracting visitors, stimulating tourism, and supporting local businesses. And whereas the city of Santa Maria is committed to fostering an environment that celebrates and supports the arts and humanities, recognizing their power to bring people together and foster a sense of community. And whereas the Recreation and Parks Department of the city of Santa Maria has shown unwavering commitment to promoting and nurturing the arts within our community, serving as a lead agency in numerous partnerships with local arts organizations to advance the cultural enrichment of our city. Whereas October has been nationally recognized as the Arts and Humanities Month, a time to celebrate and promote the rich cultural heritage and creative achievements of our community. Now therefore, the mayor, Alice Patino, of the city of Santa Maria hereby recognizes October 1 through October 31, 2023, as Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Santa Maria, and call upon community members to participate, celebrate, and promote the arts and culture in the city of Santa Maria. And as was mentioned, to accept this proclamation is Margaret Lang, artist and member of the Santa Maria Arts Council, and Dennis Mitheran.
On behalf of the arts community of Santa Maria, I'm honored to accept this proclamation, and I thank the city for your support of the arts, which elevate our human experience from toddler to elder by enhancing our understanding of ourselves and each other. Thank you.
Another proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation to be accepted by Kiwanis president Julie Posada.
Thank you. Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria was formed on May 18, 1923, to provide services and develop advancement of the community. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria celebrates a long history of service, particularly to the youth in our community. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria has hosted benefit shows, dances, golf tournaments, pancake breakfasts, and raised funds for several major projects, such as the Santa Maria Municipal Plunge Pool, the renovation of the buildings at Buena Vista Park, and the first all-inclusive playground in the community. And whereas the members of the Kiwanis Club in Santa Maria continue to benefit the community by sponsoring hundreds of youth activities programs ranging from rodeo queen candidates, sports league, scouting literacy and education, and community service projects to inspire and enrich the lives of today's youth. And whereas the 100-year anniversary of Kiwanis Club in Santa Maria would not have been possible without the active and robust team of club members who serve as mentors and role models. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria's 100-year anniversary will promote greater awareness of Kiwanis services and the value of the club's provide to the community. Now therefore, Alice Patino, mayor for the city of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the 100th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria in the city of Santa Maria, and shares our gratitude for positive contribution to the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria has made to, Santa Maria Kiwanis Club has made to our city. In witness hereof, the mayor, Alice Patino, has signed this, put her signature on this proclamation on the 17th day of October 2023. And here to accept this, as she said, is Julie Posada. We're being inundated with Posadas around.
Well, as the president of the Kiwanis Club, we're also known, just so you know, we're also known as a new type Kiwanis, but our official name is the Kiwanis Club of Santa Maria. And we're very excited to celebrate our 100 years. We have a few of our members here, so raise your hand if you're a member of the club. Good. Thank you for supporting us. And for the past 100 years, our club has provided service to the community, as was mentioned, not just in funds that we raise, but also hundreds of volunteer hours each year. So we're very proud of not only the funds that we provide back to the community, but the actual labor and the work that we all do. I'd like to personally invite you to our 100-year celebration reception on Thursday. I know you've heard this before, but I personally want to invite all of you to attend. And again, thank you for the recognition of our club's 100 years of service to this wonderful community.
Where's it at?
It is Thursday, the 19th, from 5:30 to 7:00, the Toyota, the deck.
Thank you so much.
One more, one more thing. You know, I was with another Posada recently, and this particular person said he had to leave because he was going to something where his spouse was now the president of the Kiwanis Club. So you're being thought of way beyond this meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Businesses of the Month, and Councilmember Escobedo will be presenting the certificates along with Chamber CEO Glenn Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. It is an honor to be with you again tonight to recognize two more of our businesses here in the community of Santa Maria. As you know, each month this year, we have been bringing a healthcare business and a business of longstanding in our community, and we're going to do the same thing this evening. I want to start with our healthcare business, the Akiso Occupational Health of Santa Maria, formerly known as the Industrial Medical Group, has served the occupational health needs of our community with a particular focus on agriculture, aerospace, municipalities, small businesses, individuals, and the oil and gas industry. They also are a vital part of the training of medical professionals in the community, providing externships for medical assistants, phlebotomists, physician assistants, and nurse practitioners. Here in Santa Maria, they employ 20 individuals. Most recently, due to some changes in the provider network for workers' compensation, they have seen a doubling or tripling of patient volume in that particular category, which has stretched their businesses, you can imagine, and forced them to reallocate. The Santa Maria facility is part of a network of 21 locations across the state of California. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Michael Bier, Vice President of Operations, Dr. Paul Christiansen, the Medical Director, and Adora Caporal, the Operations Manager, to receive the certificate.
Thank you very much for the honor. The Industrial Medical Group has been present for 30-plus years, and we look forward to moving on with our new partner and growing what we're able to do. Their strength in numbers and the products that we are able to provide will improve, and being recognized for what we've done throughout the years is truly an honor, and we want to thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our longstanding business, at the Chamber of Commerce, we use the term business a little broadly sometimes, and we think of anybody who is providing employment to our neighbors and friends as a business, and that's the case for our longstanding business today, which is the Y. The Y provides services to over 10,000 community members, both on and off their campus on Skyway, and to all three of the school districts in our community. From the youngest preschool members at two and a half years old, all the way to a 99-year-old member who's still active in the programs, they provide hundreds of programs and classes to serve literally everyone. The key areas of focus for the Y include youth development, healthy living, social responsibility, and providing that healthcare, or self-care, if you will, for individuals in the community. The Y was opened in Santa Maria in 1962 in a small facility just down the street here. And in the early 80s, a couple of leaders in the community decided it was time to think bigger and to build a larger facility, and they decided to do it out at what at the time would have been kind of the far edges of the community, but they had a vision that it would someday sit right smack in the middle of everything, and I think they pretty much hit it on the nose. The current facility was built in 1984, includes 45,000-square-foot multipurpose facility, an outdoor pool, soccer arena, family park, pickleball courts, two racquetball courts, and a state-of-the-art kids' corner, and indoor and outdoor licensed preschools. In the 63 years that the Y has served our community, their programs have grown to include preschool, after-school care, health and fitness for seniors and teens, an internship program, swimming lessons, water exercise, youth sports, and many other programs. Most recently, they have become the sole provider of after-school programs for Santa Maria Bonita, significantly increasing the number of youth that they serve on a daily basis. They employ 200 individuals in our community. During the economic downturns, they have redoubled their efforts to provide additional scholarships to ensure that families are able to participate in the programs regardless of ability to pay. During the COVID, they partnered with the school district and provided food services to over 10,000 members of our community each day, provided childcare to first responders, and a safe outdoor fitness haven for those who needed that opportunity when we weren't allowed indoors in small spaces. Again, it's my pleasure to recognize the CEO of the YMCA with us this evening, Shannon Seifer.
So when and only time you'll ever hear me whisper, "Thank you very much, City Council." I so appreciate all of you doing this. And Glenn, had I any idea how long that would be? I didn't know you were going to read it out loud, so sorry. But really delighted to be able to serve this community. And I have to say, and this I will be brief, we couldn't do anything we do without all the partners that we do that with. So without the hospital, without Hancock, without the city, without the chamber, the school districts, I'm not going to leave the police out, but we really couldn't serve without being part of something bigger. So thank you all for that.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. You know, as a, as a city councilperson, we get asked to go to many things, and we're invited to things all over the valley, all over the county, actually. And it seems as though she is always there, and Mrs. Seifer is always one of the first ones to come up and say hello to my wife and I. It's just, it's always a pleasure to see you, and you put in a tremendous amount of time beyond the eight to five that you're, that you're required probably to be there at, at the center. And it's just, it's nice to see you, and I'm glad that the Chamber has chosen you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Thank you, Shannon. It's always a pleasure to, to see you, and I appreciate a lot the work that you put. As Mr. Cordero mentioned, you always go the extra, walk the extra mile, and sometimes even more. So I appreciate what you do for our youth, our families, for our community, and for you and everybody on the Y. It's a great organization, so thank you for everything that you do, and everybody in the, in the Y.
Thank you. I echo the other councilmembers' comments, and I think the Y got very creative during the pandemic to get people to move. I know that at one point, they were doing online classes where the instructors were at home, and people would get up and get some movement, and then they started outdoor classes. So they were really creative, they just went with the times, and you know, they do so much for our community. A family can go work out, they have daycare, it's really a great place. So I thank you so much for all the service that you do for the Y and for the community at large. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not on the printed agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor pro tem, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom. We have one request to speak and no hands up in Zoom. Thank you. We do have a request to speak from Gary Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall, and that's too loud. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESPIT. I am speaking tonight to once again ask the city of Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that through enactment of rent stabilization ordinances and programs have provided their mobile home park residents with protection from excessive rent increases and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income citizens. The existing model lease does not do that. Again, I want to thank councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero for passing the motion to examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives. The motion was passed on June 6, 2022, but the work still remains undone. As a result of all the recent personnel changes, I know that city staff is extremely busy. We don't want to add to the challenge, but we see no alternative but to press on with honoring the June 6 motion. We, the mobile homeowners, are ready to discuss and obtain consensus. We, the mobile homeowners, are ready to discuss and obtain consensus on implementing specific changes to the existing model lease agreement and program. To that end, we have previously identified four issue areas which have been guiding discussions thus far. We request continuing with the same issues outlined as our agenda for future meetings. We also suggest that meeting records be maintained and a dashboard be created to track the issue areas and possible solutions as the stakeholders work through them. We are thankful for the time the staff has devoted thus far and are hopeful that productive discussions do lie ahead in the very near future. We continue to view our goal as being to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. We also continue to believe, given this body's collective political will, it is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of this agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Rosado, did you wish to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, no comments.
Moving on, the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, would you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of councilmembers.
Does anyone have any items they wish to pull for discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Having heard of the motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes, approved consent calendar. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing and first reading to approve water and sewer rates commencing each January 1 from 2024 through 2027.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Utilities, Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. We are here to discuss proposed water and sewer rates and staff presentation regarding the same. So this evening, we'll talk about the division a little bit, water and sewer portion of the Utilities Department, the rate-setting process, the proposed rates. We will ask the City Council to conduct a public hearing and then request council action on this item. The Water Resources Division serves approximately 20,000 customers in the Santa Maria area with 36 operational field staff, which would include operators, maintenance workers, and supervisors, as well as 12 administrative and technical support staff, such as engineering, information technology, and regulatory compliance. The division is overseen by a single water resources manager. It is a very significant amount of infrastructure that the city has fiduciary responsibility for. Our sources of water include groundwater and the state water project. On average, we produce approximately 12 million gallons a day and provide safe drinking water to the community. The components of that include a blending and disinfection facility, water wells, the state water project, which brings water all the way down through the state of California, and storage reservoirs. Inside the city itself, we have approximately 330 miles of water line, 23,000 water meters, and 3,600 fire hydrants. On the sewer side, approximately 250 miles of pipe, 4,000 manholes, and a sewer lift station. At the wastewater treatment plant, we see average flows of about 7.5 million gallons a day requiring treatment. Our permitted capacity as of October 1st, with the Regional Board's new permit, is 8 million gallons per day. So I'll talk a little bit about the rate-setting process. On the left-hand side, you'll see an upside-down triangle. We start with cost-based rates. That includes determining a revenue requirement, then developing a cost-to-service, and then a rate design. In California, uniquely, we also deal with what we call Proposition 218. That includes notice requirements, protest provisions, and then ultimately council action. So a revenue requirement really is used to, as it sounds, determine the level of revenue necessary. It includes prudent financial planning, which include revenues to support operations, needs, and capital, adequate funding for renewal and replacements, meeting target reserve balances, and it is based on recognized standards. On the water side, we have the American Waterworks Association M1 manual, and on the wastewater side is the Water Environment Federation manual that we follow. We look at rates over a 10-year period with a specific focus on the next five years. Importantly, the enterprise funds stand alone, meaning that they do not transfer money between the funds or from other funds. So the source of revenue to pay those costs is the rates and user fees. Lastly, we use a cash basis for the accounting, which is the generally accepted method for most municipal utilities. So specifically, when we looked at the water portion for the revenue requirement, we found that revenue adjustments were necessary. It was needed to meet our annual O&M expenses. It is a reflection of the water supply and reliability we've seen with respect to the state water project in the drought. Please. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. O&M means operation and maintenance. So when I talk about several hundred miles of water line, thousands of valves, those valves have to be exercised by city staff to keep them viable and usable. If we have water line breaks, they shut down portions of the water line so that they can be repaired. Maintenance of meters, meters become stuck or unoperational, or we have to repair those. So operation and maintenance cost would include those maintenance-type costs as well as the cost of chemicals to keep the water safe to drink, the cost of electricity for pumps to pump the water to do the treatment, that sort of thing. So those are your general day-to-day expenses would be operation and maintenance or O&M. Thank you. Appreciate you stopping me for that clarification, actually. Sorry for the lingo. We also need adequately fund the city's commitment to the state water project and maintain strong reserve levels. Examples of some of the cost drivers that we're seeing with water is increased state regulations, and those increase the cost that we have for compliance, enforcement, monitoring, and reporting. In the last two years alone, the permitting cost from the state increased by 15% for our water service. We've seen an increase in chemical costs of 25% over the last 12 to 18 months. As with all other city departments, we have CalPERS pension liabilities. PG&E was a 5% annual increase year over year, and we have need for additional groundwater wells to shore up local supply and talk about state water reliability. On the good-do side, approximately two years ago, we were able to refinance the water bonds. That was a fortuitous opportunity. There was a very brief window that the city could refinance the water bonds. Those are in relation to the infrastructure that was put in for the state water project and the blending and disinfection facility. That happened during a time of low interest rates, and that refinancing alone, without extending the term of the debt, leads to about $1 million of annual savings for the water fund, which in turn is savings for the ratepayers. So when we stack those revenues and expenses... Sorry, it's not clicking. Thank you. Sorry. This gives us an idea of the water revenue requirement. The bar chart indicates the operation and maintenance is the dark gray. We can see those costs increase, and those would be where the chemical costs would be, the electrical costs. In addition, there's the net debt service. You can see how that goes down a little bit. That is related to those water bonds that I talked about. And then the increase in costs are the rate-funded capital, and that is looking at funding additional groundwater well, that sort of infrastructure replacement. So that drives the revenue requirement on the water side. Worked that time for the clicker. The revenue requirement on the wastewater side is very similar. We found that there was necessarily a requirement, once again, to prudently fund operations and maintenance on the sewer side, a little different from water. It's not a pressure system, it's a gravity system. But we do have to clean those sewer lines to keep them flowing properly in a gravity environment, as well as cleaning up areas where we might have fats, oil, and grease. And I'll take this opportunity to encourage people at home to not put fats, oil, and grease down the drain. It causes problems for us. It solidifies in the sewer lines, can cause sewer backups, which is terrible. And as long as I'm at it, please don't flush the flushable wipes. Just because it says flushable doesn't mean it's good for our system. Technically, golf balls are flushable, too. They'll make their way down the toilet, but they're not really treated at the sewer plant. So, sorry.
Good to know.
Yeah, good to know. I thought I'd just point that out as long as we're here. So we have infrastructure renewal and replacement. We have manholes that... It is a very caustic environment with the sewer lines and the manholes. As you can imagine, we have to go in and line those manholes to keep the cement from corroding out. Regulatory requirement is a very large driver for wastewater. I was before the City Council a couple of times last year where we talked about the Regional Water Quality Control Board intent to enroll the city's wastewater treatment plant in the general order-waste discharge requirements. Last fall, I was before the council. They authorized the city to submit the notice of intent. Approximately six months later this spring, the Regional Board sent us our notice of applicability, which started the clock for the city to meet new waste discharge requirements at our wastewater plant. The interim requirements kicked in October 1 of this month. That starts the city on a very specific timeline and process. I will tell you that the discharge requirements required of the wastewater treatment plant, our current wastewater treatment plant, cannot meet. So that means we have to change the treatment regime. In essence, that means upgrade of facilities that can be to provide a higher level of treatment or build new facilities to add that additional treatment. Also, we need to meet ending reserve targets. A point on here is the debt service coverage ratio. We are not proposing to borrow money for the wastewater fund at this time, but in that 10-year horizon, we will be needing to invest significant revenue into the wastewater plant, and that will, at this point, we're projecting that we will need to borrow funds. The city will need to borrow funds to pay for that. When we borrow money, the people who loan us money, one of those factors is the debt service coverage ratio. They generally look for a multiplier of 1.20. So importantly, not only do we have to have rates to cover our typical operation and maintenance costs, it has to be 120% of those costs so that we have a cushion available to pay the people who loaned us money. We also need to recruit and retrain certified staff and technology for improved operations, much like the cost drivers we saw on the water side. We're seeing permitting costs went up by 8%, chemical costs 25%, PG&E was a 7% increase year over year. And I'd also like to point out that, as I noted early, the city's current permitted capacity at the wastewater plant as of October 1st was the 8 million gallons a day. We are looking at what we need to do to the percolation ponds, whether that's refurbishment, reenforcement, or expansion of those ponds to ensure that there's adequate capacity to meet the needs of a growing community. So those are additional cost drivers. So this is the projection in the four-year horizon that we're requesting the rates. As you can see, the O&M costs go up, but the rate-funded capital goes up relatively significantly. In order to meet the new waste discharge requirements, we did put out a request for proposals to bring a consultant onboard to essentially assist us with managing this significant program. It will be an 8- to 10-year program, and put together basically a wastewater treatment master plan to plan for and build a facility that will serve the community for the next 30 to 50 years.
How much are we talking about? You mentioned the new water treatment plant. To what number are we talking?
We do not have the design yet, but plants in this region that have been designed to meet similar constituent requirements, discharge requirements, and based on their capacity, we anticipate that the cost for the overall project will be in excess of $200 million.
Thank you.
So as I noted in the previous slide, outside of California, for the most part, the revenue requirement would be the end of it, and we would adjust rates. Importantly, in California, we follow Prop 218. That's slang, I guess. It was a Proposition 218, but it amended Article 13D of the California Constitution. Most taxpayers are familiar with it because it is the portion that requires a majority vote regarding taxes. With respect to property-related fees, it has different requirements, which we are fulfilling this night with the Prop 218 process for the public hearing and the majority protest. So we go through a... Prop 218 also requires cost basis for establishing fees. They have to be reasonable, they have to be proportional to the property receiving the service, and they have to be cost-based. So in this case, it also requires public notification and a protest process. In Santa Maria, we have 19,913 total accounts. So a majority protest would be 9,958 official protests. So I'll talk a little bit about the cost-to-service study. What is it, why we do it, and the objectives. The gist of it is, the cost-to-service study determines, now that we know we need additional revenue, the cost-to-service study, for lack of a better term, is used as a tool to determine who should pay for that additional revenue that is necessary. So we look, as we look through these, I'll talk a little bit about on the water side and then on the sewer side as well. So on the water side, the cost-to-service study noted that there are cost differences exist for water of service and need for legal decisions, calculation of rates, fixed charges. So I'll give you some examples. Costs are grouped by types of customer. For example, costs related to conservation might be placed in the higher tier for water service because we want high-water users to work on conservation. Commercial customers, all of the costs associated with the city's backflow program or cost connection would be attributable to those customers that utilize that type of work. And then an example of a cost shared equally among everyone would be, for example, billing. Doesn't matter how much water you use or the type of customer. It costs the same to print out the bill, put a stamp on it, and send it out. So as those costs get aggregated among the classes of customer and then based on water usage so that we are meeting the requirements of the California Constitution for proportionality, we did find that their customer usage data indicates that it is appropriate for us to move from three classes to a single class of service on the water side. So historically, where we would have a different use for well customers, I'll also point out that the city no longer has a separate non-potable well system. So that rate is proposed to go away. And likewise, there was not a statistically significant difference between the mobile home users and all of the other users that were aggregated together. So in Santa Maria, they're proposed to go into essentially a single class of customer. If you use water in Santa Maria, regardless of whether you're a business and industry residence, if you, based on the size of your meter, you'll pay a fixed fee based on the size of the meter and then based on the variable charge for the consumptive use. So based on all of that information together, the revenue requirement, stacking the cost in the appropriate customer categories, we then put that toward the customers, projected water use, and you come up with the proposed rates for water. This was the information that went out in the Prop 218 notices to every single customer, our account holder in Santa Maria. And these are the rates we're recommending to go into effect on the water side, starting January 1 of next year, and then each January 1 for the three years following that.
Yes? Do we have an average of... Do we have an average of how many units of water in Santa Maria, in residential, in single-family residential houses?
Yeah, typical, we have to go with big numbers, but a typical single-family residential uses about 10 units of water a month.
Thank you.
So I'll talk a little bit about the cost of service study on the wastewater side. Similar, we need to reflect recent legal decisions and then really calculation of rates is based on fixed charge and variable charge, and we meet the requirements of Prop 218. So similarly, we look at costs, aggregate costs into class of customers where it might make sense. For example, residential, whether it's single-family, multifamily, or hotel-motel, the strength of the wastewater coming out is relatively similar, but density and flows may be different. For example, a large block of apartments would have less public sewer lines to serve them, as opposed to large lot, single-family residential, something of that nature. Similarly, on the commercial side, sewer strength varies, but also the flow varies. And the example I give is an insurance agent office and a gym that has showers. Two commercial businesses, one is going to use a lot more water and put more sewer into our system, and then likewise, if you compare that to a car wash, maybe the strength of the sewer. So on the commercial side, we take into account the volume of water as well as the strength of the wastewater. And then for heavy root user and industrial, both use and intensity error variable, and those are unique based on the constituents that we measure in the wastewater. So based on that, we went through the rate basis of design and found that apart, that the grouping of apartments, we, we had separate rates for apartments less than two units, apartments three units and more, and mobile home were three separate classes that we had before. Based on the statistical data that we have on the use, we find that those are essentially similar. As I mentioned before, they have similar strength characteristics of the sewer, and really, they're all multifamily-type use, very similar for the public line required to serve it, as well as the, the strength of the sewer. And then, as I said, it reflects the recent customer usage data that we have. So in light of that, we're condensing the city's existing customer classes. So we would maintain the single-family residential. There would be a multifamily residential, which would include essentially mobile homes, apartments, those sorts of things, and multifamily residential, and then hotels, motels, and rest homes would be still separate, primarily due to while they're dense, like apartments or multifamily, it takes into account that not every hotel room has people in it every night, and likewise, not the same use of like kitchen facilities, laundry, that sort of thing. So they're still slightly different on a per-unit basis. So that's on the residential side. On the commercial side, we maintain the commercial 1, commercial 2, and those are based on the strength of the sewage, as well as the heavy users, which is really the, the large industrial users, where we, where they test for those specific constituents, and we charge based on the amount of constituents put into the city's sewer system. So with the water and sewer rates, what does that mean for the average single-family residential in Santa Maria? Small bar chart, I apologize. The darker bar near the bottom would be where the proposed rates would be as of January 1, 2024. It would be about $136 a month for a single-family residential. That is an increase of about $8.65 per month for a single-family resident using 10 units. I always caution about putting up a chart like this. As I've talked about all the way through, we follow the requirements of Prop 218, and it is a cost-based rate. I just show this up here so that the city council can have some indication that the system that we have responsibility for, we're operating in a cost-effective and fiduciarily responsible way. And then I've also put the second bar up there, which is January of 2027. That would be where we would be approximately four years from now, although I will tell you that I'm aware of probably 50 to 75% of these other agencies on here already have rate increase notices going out. This is just as of today. So by 2027, they will have increased significantly as well.
Yes, go ahead.
So what you're showing here is that the light blue bars, it's how much other cities in this area are paying as of today.
Correct.
Right. And, and the two bars, the, the Santa Maria is where we are in 2024, where, where we would be in 2024, and if this passes, where we'll be in 2027. So that means that even with this increase, we will, I mean, the city center will be charging less than all the, the other cities, and, but we still need to be seeing there is other cities also increasing that.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
You, you are correct. So as of today, Napa-Mo Community Service District customers that use 10 units of water and have their sewer treated, pay more today, and then we're proposing that the rates in Santa Maria go to four years from now. Yes?
Thank you.
So I appreciate the council's time. This is really the end of the report regarding the water and sewer rates. We did complete a cost-of-service study. Over the last several years, the Prop 218 notices were mailed out in August in conformance with the law. We did hold a public workshop September 27 over in Shepherd Hall. We had three members of the public attend that workshop. We did provide a presentation, and really, the next step is for the city council to conduct, or request the city council, conduct a public hearing. And these are really the procedures for the public hearing. So I'll be happy to address the council at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you so much for that riveting report. And we're going to now go to see if the council has any questions. Any questions? Councilor Cordero? Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Yes, we would love to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Springer, for your presentation of a complete report in what we do. Unfortunately, you have the unfortunate responsibility of bringing up to the citizens in the community that they're going to get taxed a little bit more. It's, it's going to cost a little bit more to turn on the faucet. And how many, how many employees do you have working directly in this, in this enterprise plant, about?
Made the mistake of turning that off. In the, in the utilities department overall, we are about 120, so including administrative staff, water resources would be about 50 of those.
Okay. And it's just unfortunate that that has to happen, and it's never a good day to, for anybody on this side of the dais to explain that we're going to have to raise your, your costs and your taxes, or whatever the case may be. But it just sometimes becomes necessary. And, and all those people are going to be asking for raises because of the cost that's being raised to them. So it's just kind of a necessary thing. I kind of miss my friend, Ernie Armenta, that's usually here for this one, and, and comments on, on, on the fact that we try to keep, keep it more manageable. But it's just a necessary evil that we have. Sometimes we, we just must raise certain costs because of all the costs that's getting raised to us as a, as a city entity. So I thank you very much for the completeness, and unless there's more questions.
We need public comment.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Now we're going to move on to public comment. We do have one request to speak, and that is Jim Welsett.
We, I just, Mayor Protem, I also just wanted to mention, we do also have one hand up in Zoom.
Okay. And your last name, sir?
Welch.
Welch.
Thank you very much for letting me have a chance to talk. Excellent report. I've been involved with staff reports before, and this one was well done. The question that, that's involved that I have is, some of the figures that were, were presented, that were sent out to us, nothing serious, it's just that they struck a little bit odd to me. So I thought that I'd bring that up so that they could be reviewed again a little bit more, maybe, maybe they're right. Maybe it's just a little bit more of a guess than a, an understanding of where it's going. I'm retired. I worked for a nonprofit. I was at the lower end of that spectrum. I have a small pension. I did not get a large bailout thing. Live on social security also. Last year, we got a good increase on social security. This next year, it's only going to be 3%, 3.2%, and probably after that, it's going to be going back down because everybody's trying to get inflation down. So dollar-wise, for a, a good number of retirees, every penny makes a difference. Every dollar makes a difference. When I looked at the figures, as he pointed out, the increase for the, the first year monthly was $8.65, right on the money. The, the thing that caught my eye mostly was with the fourth year. In the fourth year, where the sewer had been going up 13%, and then 13%, and then down to 11%, why it dropped, I don't know. But then in the fourth year, it's going to go up 20%. And that caught my eye. That seems like a big jump at that point. Why is there not more consistency? What, what could be done to level that a little bit better for us? And bottom line is that you have this 12% increase in the fourth year overall, and that makes a big jump. Social Security is going up very small. Our pensions, my wife and I's, go up 1.5% a year. That's our cost of living increase. Social Security's going to be 3%. Food wants to more, wants more money. Rent wants more money. Water, sewer want more money. Electricity wants more money. Gas wants more money. When you have low-income people or lower income, every increase, every cent makes a difference. Just thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any, do we have someone on Zoom?
Yes, we do. Kathy? Can?
What's your name? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good, thank you. Mayor Protem and members of the council, my name is Kathy Sherrill. And I live on Hermosa Street in Santa Maria. I'm not here to tell me directly about the proposed increases in water costs, but I understand that there's a cost for providing water to residents, and business and these costs can increase. I hope though that the city is also concerned with water conservation and promoting conservation towards finite resources. That's what I think the city can do a better job with, and that is what I wanted to comment on. Everyone has a meter, which I believe measures gallons. The estate calculates and then charges as far as water based on units. It's not precise. It's based on three tiers. If a resident uses enough water, they'll kick them up until the next year. They have no idea how much into the next year they've gone. Ultimately, if they want to cut back to save money or save on water, it's much more difficult to figure out how to do that then. If each household were to be told how many gallons it uses, instead of this complicated, I think it's complicated charge that is supposed to be helpful, but it isn't. And again, we're, we charge in units. Before my husband and I moved to Santa Maria, we lived on a ranch. The well number wasn't portable. So we had a water truck then, it took on $10,000 a tank. I guess that we conserve. The delivery guys showed us on the tank where the water was when we had 2,000 gallons left so we could order more before running out. It was simple. We came to know that if we reached by 2,000 gallons sooner, we were used to come up, we would cut back. My point is, people understand gallons. If you're trying to reduce the amount, maybe it's by telling yourself it takes shorter showers or whatever, you can see the actual results, and you let's go. So I guess, you know, my complaint is how this use of units is just complicated in that way, and not very helpful. I'm worried too that this might be, because it's sort of vague and complicated, it doesn't really tell people how much water they're using. Means they're either, they either don't conserve because they don't, don't know how, or they don't figure out all the consequences going on, or they go to the other extreme, as I've seen in my neighborhood, especially with rentals. They think, well, let's just not water anything, let's put concrete in the lawn instead of bothering the landscape with water-wise plants, you know, to do other things. I just urge the city to rethink this effort of calculating water usage and value. It's confusing, and I think it can hurt its competition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Valdez. And that will conclude the public comment. So I will close the public hearing and ask Assistant City Clerk Ms. Valdez to read the official report of the protest received.
Mayor Protem and members of the city council, the city of Santa Maria has 19,913 ratepayer accounts. For a majority protest to exist to the water and sewer rates for 2024 to 2027, 9,958 valid written protests would be required. I have confirmed that at the close of this public hearing this evening, I have received a total of five valid written protests. Therefore, no, no majority protest exists to the water and sewer rates for 2024 to 2027.
Thank you, Mrs. Valdez. I will bring now the item back to council for discussion or a motion. Councilor Roscovedo?
Mayor Protem, when was, when was the last time that water and sewer rates were raised? Do we have a?
2019.
The city council took action in 2019. The most recent rate increase was January 1 of 2023.
And, and something that was brought up and, and definitely also caught my, my eyes and some of my constituents is this, this jump of, I mean, when I see the single-family residential, you have $8, basically, almost $8, $8 approximately, difference in between '27 and 20, '26 and '27. Meantime, before that, it was $4, $4. And it happens basically with all of those rates. Is there any particular reason of, of this, the difference between those years?
Yes, there is a reason for that. The, the city's sewer rates currently are, I don't think, like the third lowest in the region. We have benefited for a long time. The city's technology at the wastewater plant is a trickling filter. That is technology that's been around since the early 1900s. Portions of the plant were built in the 1930s, and we're still using those. So what has happened with the regional board coming to us to meet new waste discharge requirements is that we are going to need to invest in essentially modern technology. And as I mentioned during the presentation, we are looking at a 10-year horizon. So over the course of the next 10 years, we will be building that new and improved wastewater treatment plant that will serve the community for the next 30 to 50 years. So in that timeframe, we are going to need to expend the funds to build that wastewater plant. Part of that will be to borrow funds, basically to go out and solicit bonds regarding that. The requirement from the people who will borrow us money is to have that debt service coverage ratio of 1.20. So the reason that the rates are shown a little bit slower increasing and then higher and then higher at the end is that in the near term, in fact, I'll be bringing an item to city council within the next month or two, is that we will be getting the consultants on board to work on the wastewater master plan, the design, the engineering costs, which will be significant in themselves. Just past this four-year horizon is where we anticipate significant costs in construction. That is the year, let's say, on our horizon, year five or year six, that we have to have rates to cover that debt service coverage ratio. So even with these increases, we intend to spend cash balances down over the next three or four years, essentially some money that we have in the reserve account. We'll be spending that money down as we raise rates up so that when we get to the part of the project where we need to borrow money, we can reduce the total amount borrowed, so reduce the amount of interest we have to pay. But we also have to have rates for that debt service coverage ratio. So it's meeting that point at the end. And that's why the rates are raised slower at the beginning because essentially the project is gaining momentum. As we get our studies, we do the engineering design. And then as we move into construction, there are a significant increase in costs. So that's reflected in why the rates are a bigger increase in that fourth year.
Anything else? Councilmember Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Mr. Springer, it's necessary to raise these to pay our costs. Is there, are there safeguards in place? Or can you just raise these on however the council says, well, we want to raise it X number of dollars? Or are there things in place to prevent us as a council and you as a department head from just saying, well, let's raise it $10 or $20? Do you have anything like that in place at the state level?
The, thank you for that question. The provisions of the California Constitution relative to the requirements of what we call Prop 218 talk about that it has to be proportional and it has to be related to providing the cost of the service to that parcel or that property. So there are safeguards in place, yes.
So you're not just making an arbitrary figure here that says, this is what I think it's going to be? I mean, you under some guidelines as well. Or we are as a city entity.
Yeah, the city with its rate consultant went through the requirements of Prop 218 with respects to the revenue requirement, the cost of service study, and has been based on years of analysis and data and putting the information together. It is certainly not a win.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Any other further? Councilmember Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So that means summarizing a little bit is that the city cannot charge more of what's the cost of service. Is that right?
That is correct.
So that also means that the city is not keeping, you know, extra money into the, just the city as, is not like business?
Yeah, importantly, that's an important point that I did not make this evening. The water and wastewater funds that we're discussing here are enterprise funds, which means they are held separate and apart from the general fund. These revenues are not for the general fund. They are related to costs associated with the operation of water and wastewater. And that is what those, adjusting these rates and these fees are to pay the cost for water and wastewater separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto.
Thank you. Someone who, the person who called to get public comment mentioned that the way in which we have our charges in units can be confusing to residents. Is there a way that we could perhaps add something that is less confusing to residents?
Thank you for that question. I made note of that as well. I think it was Ms. Sherrill commented. I've kind of made some eye contact down with the finance director. The utility billing is handled out of finance. And we can certainly take a look at what we can do. We are dealing a little bit with an archaic enterprise system, our financial system at the city. But understood the point. People are aware of what gallons are, not necessarily hundreds of gallons or units. So if there's an opportunity for us to provide that clarity, we'll see what we can do.
Anything else? Do we have a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
So we have to be really clear.
Just to clarify, I did not hear that the public hearing was closed. If you would clarify that for the record prior to the motion.
Yes, so I closed the public hearing, and we brought it back to the council for discussion or a motion. There was discussions, questions, and now we have a motion. And the motion is to introduce an ordinance for first reading approving water and sewer rates for the next four years. So we have a motion by Councilmember Escobedo and a second by, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Escobedo did the motion. Cordero made the motion, and your second was? Soto. Councilmember Soto made the second.
I'll call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for all your comments, input, and presentation. I know that it took a lot of work. I appreciate all the residents that came and spoke about the increase. I really do appreciate that you guys take the time to show up. The next item will be a report by interim city manager, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Just real quickly, for the November agenda coming up, we have a retirement proclamation for a longtime city employee, Mike Davis. We will have the chamber's annual report. We'll also have the code compliance annual report. There's also an item, the donation being accepted by the Santa Maria, from the Santa Maria Police Council for the police department. And then you have two public hearings, one on the solar power award contract and then one from the cemetery district zone change and plan development permit. Also, the regular business item next week or next meeting will be the general plan update and preferred alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is oral reports of council members, beginning with required reporting. So who would like to start? Councilmember Cordero.
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem. On the 10th, or excuse me, on the 18th, I think it was, whatever it was, I attended the Greg Hart sidewalk hours out here on Broadway. And I was a little taken. There was, it was, there was a lot of people there. When I was there, there was a young lady from the cause organization that was making the presentation to him. And there were people constantly coming up to him. And I thought it was productive for some of them at heart. And then on the, the same day, I attended a leaders forum for the homeless on the 10th. I was at a tour put on by the, or managed by the chamber at Hila Cal. And on the 11th, I was at a tour managed also by the chamber for the old Moffett Trench. And both of these are, have some similarities to them regarding their milling and machining and things like that. It was informative. And I think that it's, if you get an opportunity as a citizen or as a city employee to attend those tours, I think you probably ought to do so. Later on the 11th, I met with the representatives doing the solar program here in the city. And that likewise was very informative, knowing that we're looking at some advanced technology of going into the solar business. And then on the 13th, 14th, and 15th, I attended all three days of the Air Fest out at the airport, which was an incredibly awesome show. I'm sure that, I'm sure that some people were not appreciative of the noise and whatnot. But it is just incredible what those young men and women can do on the, with those airplanes, those jets and stuff. It's just the power displayed by the, by the Air Force is just incomprehensible in some groups. And it was, the food was good, the company was good. The, even, there was even some little people there that were very special to be with. A young lady by the name of Natalie was there and made my day there a little bit better than it probably would have been. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Escobedo.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. On October 11, I was invited as a guest speaker for the Hispanic Heritage Celebration at Allen Hank of College. And I appreciate it was really well-attended, food was great. And but particularly, the environment was really well put together by the, by the Associated Party government. And on Friday, the 13th, I attended the airshow festival as well on the 15th. I didn't make it on this Saturday. But it was a very impressive event, really well put together. I had a lot of fun. And it's, I don't know much about airplanes. I know that they fly. And they were telling me all these, all these components have the names. And it was just interesting to know something that I've never really gotten into detail, but that it's part of our history as a city. So it was very well, I learned a lot. And on the other side, more than, this is not a council, I'm not saying this is a council, but I would like to make a recognition to the, an appreciation for the city and the city departments that support the San Maria Open Streets on October 8. It was a great event. And this is, I just want to recognize all the hard work that was behind the scenes and the partnership with the city of Santa Maria. And looking forward for future next year.
Councilmember Soto.
No reportable item.
Okay. I attended some, actually a lot, but I'm only going to talk about the Mayor's Ball, which was a really great event. Econ Alliance put on a manufacturers' event. So we were able to speak, hear from Atlas Capco, Moffett Trench, and other manufacturers who are bringing jobs to Santa Maria. I also attended the airshow, and I also went on the tour. But the most interesting thing and exciting thing that I attended this week was a high school ribbon cutting. Santa Maria High finished the building. And it was really great for me to go back. I went to Santa Maria High and look at what the school has become. It's really changed. And I think it was just really amazing to be there and to see how the community came together. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.